Meeting to order for Monday, October 21st, roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Meske.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Seen in hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Consent items, Ms. Thompson.
On tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of October 7th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of October 14th, application for exempt permit from the Diamond Edge Figure Skating Club, council payable report October 3rd through the 15th, for council's acceptance, the Human Rights Commission minutes of August 20th, and for council's information, the Invest in Wilmer Board meeting summary of September 11th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the agenda, discussion. I'm sorry.
You said agenda consent items, but there aren't any resolutions, right?
There's no, yeah, there's no resolutions, sorry. Just a discussion. Question was if, are there any resolutions, there are not any, so it'd be a simple motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have the Public Works Safety Committee report for October 9th, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Public Works Safety Committee met Wednesday, October 9th, 2019, at the City Office Building. All present were myself, Councilmember Osmus, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Alvarado, also our Public Works Director, Sean Christensen, and our Fire Chief, Frank Hanson, was in attendance, and our Police Chief was out of town on that day. The first item that was up for discussion was our police and fire statistics, which are attached in our notes. There were no substantial or unusual items in there, but this time would be a good time to ask either chief if you have any questions. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to our next item. Number three was project number 1903-A, change order number one, and staff brought forth for information, project 1903-A, that included the overlay of 15th Street Southwest from Trot Ave. 19th, Trot Avenue to 19th Avenue. The change order number one resulted from adjusting a driveway in the 1200 block of a previously vacated street and moving a catch basin into the new curb line. A motion was made and seconded to approve change order 1903-A, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve change order number one for project number 1903-A, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda for discussion was the Robins Island Parking and Water Main Professional Services Contract. And we did discuss the Robins Island Parking and Water Main improvements being identified as one of the local option sales tax projects. It includes reconstructing parking areas and drive aisles, as well as rerouting the water main to enhance the system and better serve the entire property. A proposal has been submitted by Bolton and Mink for the design and construction-related services portion of the project, and that is in the amount of $199,550, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve professional services contract with Bolton, Mink, for Robins Island Parking and Water Main in the amount of $199,550, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Meske.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fifth item for discussion that night was the Civic Center Ice System Replacement Change Order Number Six. And let me pull up my notes on this. The city entered into agreement with B-32 Engineering, which is formerly Stevens Engineering, back in October 2017, for the design and construction-related services to replace the two ice plants with one system at the Civic Center facility. The refrigeration system in each building being near the end of their useful life, Stevens proposed multiple options for layouts with cost estimates based on the discussions at the kickoff of the meeting in November with staff. Option B, a two-sheet ice system and expanded resurfacer room for the Blue Line Arena, which incorporates an interior snowmelt pit, was chosen for the project. Cornerstone of Wilmer was awarded the construction project at July 16, 2018 council meeting. The change order number six in the amount of $30,714 resulted from a couple items, which I will read now. The first item, a new subsoil header in the Cardinal Arena. The second, the repair of conduits and wiring underneath the concrete floor. And third, the extra pea gravel in the Cardinal Arena trench due to the excess groundwater on the site. And this item is still within the budget of the project after some discussion. The change order number six was motion for $30,714 to the Civic Center Ice System Replacement Project, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a resolution approving change order number six for the Civic Center, which keeps the project still within budget, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes, Councilmember Plowman.
We had no further items besides just discussing our future calendar items that we will be meeting this week on and also in subsequent weeks, so I will move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes, discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have Finance Committee report of October 10th, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, October 10th, at 5:15 at City Hall. Present were Councilmembers Nelson, Plowman, Fagerly, and Osmus. Others present were Finance Director Steve Okens, City Clerk Judy Thompson, Wilmer Municipal Utilities General Manager John Heron, and Wilmer Municipal Utilities Finance Director Denise Rungy. There were no public comments. We had three items to bring forth for approval. The first item is a resolution accepting donations. In accordance with the city's donation protocol established in 2016, the third quarter 2019 activity was reviewed. Two donations were received of $600 from Ag Country Farm Credit Services for the Park and Rec Scholarship Program, and $2,000 from the Wilmer Lakes Rotary for Park and Rec Scholarship Program. These donations have been acknowledged by the city administrator by expressing the community's appreciation to the donor. It was moved and seconded to introduce a resolution to accept donations received in the third quarter of 2019, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the donations, third quarter 2019, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly. Meske.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. The next motion or next item was recommended to be tabled. Parcels number 95-668-1700, 95668-4900, and 959131115, all of which were vacant lots, had been forfeited to the state of Minnesota for non-payment of property taxes. As such, Kanduii County has valued these parcels at $300, $100, and $200 respectfully. There are no special assessments owing against said parcels. It was the consensus of the committee to send this matter back to Public Works Director Sean Christensen prior to authorizing the county to sell these parcels to provide further clarification of why the city would not benefit from owning them, particularly because of their location and stormwater issues. So that item was referred back. The next item was a resolution for approving agricultural exemptions. It is the policy of the city to temporarily exempt these assessments from certain lands currently used for agricultural purposes. Annually, contract is made with the listed property owners to ascertain that their desire to place the land in agricultural use through the upcoming crop year. Staff presented and proposed resolution listing the property owners who have made the application for agricultural land exemption for 2020 and have met the criteria contained in the city's comprehensive assessment policy. It was moved and seconded to recommend a resolution approving the agricultural land exemption of special assessments, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agricultural land exemptions of the special assessments, discussion. Councilmember Alvarado.
I was just wondering, do we have the same number of people applying as we did last year? Do we know, or does it? Oh.
Do you want to go to city administrator first, is that your request?
He said to go to whatever staff member would handle it, so.
Okay. To me? Go ahead, yes.
Okay. Yes, there was the same applications that we had last year.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions?
They are listed in the documentation that's attached with the minutes.
Okay, I was just wanting to make sure, I was curious if we had the same amount. Thank you.
Additional questions? Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Our third motion was regarding the utility rate ordinance and to set a hearing for November 4th. Proposed rate changes by the Wilmer Municipal Utilities were presented and reviewed. If approved, a new rate would be added for vehicle charging. Further water rates are being proposed through 2023, and there will be a newly added formula for electric energy acquisition adjustment. The committee requested information on how these water rates compared to like communities, which will be distributed with the council agenda packet, and they are attached to the documentation. There was also discussion about the utility improvement charge instituted by the city several years ago, which is used to fund a portion of debt service payments for the street's tenure, street improvement bonds. This will be discussed at a future meeting. It was moved and seconded to introduce a utility rate ordinance and set a public hearing for November 4th regarding the proposed utility rate changes, and I will enter that motion now.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to set a public hearing for November 4th to talk about the utility rate ordinance, discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd also recommend that we have a second motion on this topic, which would be to publish the ordinance by summary, which would require six out of eight affirmative votes. That reduces the cost tremendously.
I can enter that motion. Ms. Thompson did ask us to do that with that, so I'm fine entering that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to publish the ordinance by summary. This is a motion with a roll call vote. And as a reminder to the council, when we publish something by summary, it takes a minimum of six votes of the council, and the mayor cannot vote on that particular vote. So it takes a supermajority. So discussion. Councilmember Meske.
Are we going to have that available and posted in its entirety on the website?
Yes, we will.
Yeah, it'll be on the website. It'll be posted like they're normally posted with just an asterisk? Okay. And then it's available for viewing at City Hall, is that correct? Correct. Additional discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. We then moved on to discussion items, and just asking for any further requests, concerns, or questions about the mayor's proposed 2020 budget to be submitted to the city administrator grommets soon. The PIR Fund was briefly discussed with further consideration to take place at future meetings, and the Finance Committee meeting calendar and future agenda items were summarized as well. There was no other business to come before the committee, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:10. And if there are no questions, I will enter the motion for the minutes to be approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes, discussion, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go back to the forfeited land.
Go ahead.
Tax forfeited, okay. My memory came back to me, and I would make a motion that we accept the price or pay the county the price they're asking for parcel 959131115, which is kind of a holding pond in my neighborhood, and I know the city has invested around $11,000 in putting a storm outlet in. And I talked with engineer Christensen, and I think he might want to speak about it. I think it's time of essence for getting this done.
Mr. Christensen?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, I don't know timing-wise on that, but I can, obviously I can confirm that we have done projects in that pond, if you will, that area. We've done some clean-out and some erosion control in that area. We've got a storm drain through that, into and through that pond area or that forfeited property area, and we've got a couple storm structures there as well. So at the very minimum, we'd have to maintain an easement if a private individual purchased it. But I think at this point, you know, for that price that I understand, I don't know what the price is, but it sounds like it's fairly inexpensive to get the forfeiture. It'd probably be a good idea for the city to have that. It connects to the trail system that's there as well, so.
And for me, the storm outlet is right on the edge of my property. I gave an easement so my neighbor wouldn't get flooded. So Holly Wilson was engineer at that time, so. I think it's pretty important that the city keeps this and maintains it because there is an outlet to the northwest of me that flows under 23rd Street, and that gets plugged once in a while, and the city crew has to go and unplug that, so.
Yeah, the only downside, Mayor, members, if I may, the only downside I can see to owning it would be the additional mowing maintenance, if you will, that we would have to do on occasional basis. So I don't see very many downsides to it.
In the history of that, I think the neighbors would call maybe once a year to have that mowed, so it isn't that big of a deal.
Right.
Second.
Did you introduce that as a motion?
I did.
Motion made and seconded, Councilmember Nelson.
Is there a deadline for this? I thought we had time when we had this discussion. There are three very unusual pieces of property, and I thought it made sense for us to refer it back to get clarification on all three.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that is true. We do have a deadline, it's 60 days from September 15th, so we do have extra time, and we discuss that at the committee meeting, and it is on the finance agenda for this Thursday night to be addressed. And then it would come back to council at the November 4th meeting. So we still have time to address that, and it will be taken through committee on Thursday.
So my understanding reviewing the document, and I had no conversations about it, but in looking at the three spots, I had a similar concern to what Councilmember Fagerly brought up, and the part that that bigger piece was more concerning to me than the two smaller pieces. But, so we do have a motion on the table to approve the purchasing of, would be the larger of the three pieces, and that has been seconded, additional discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify with the city engineer, does the city gain any additional liability by owning that parcel of property with regards to our storm system?
Mr. Christensen.
Councilmember Plowman, I, not being the attorney type of...
Should we refer to the attorney?
Answer here, I can't see where we would gain additional liability over what we already have with the system there.
Do you concur, Attorney Scott?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm certainly not aware of the specific circumstances of this property, but just listening to the discussion at the council table, there's nothing that would cause me any concern about this piece of property as opposed to any other.
Councilmember Nelson. I'm sorry, do you have a follow-up?
If I could.
Yes.
I was just, I should have maybe clarified just a little bit, any liability above and beyond what the property owners prior would have had, and if there has been specific problems on that piece of property that would concern us about owning it now.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I don't disagree with Councilmember Fagerly's motion. However, at the time, we were uncomfortable with what was presented by staff, and we asked them to go back to review it, and that process was in place. And so I think all three parcels should be dealt with at the same time and come to us as a recommendation from staff. And that was the request at the meeting for clarification with how it was presented and to go back. And so I'm not quite sure if I know why we have to vote on it tonight and then worry about the other two later.
So I thought the minute said that it was going to get referred to Public Works, and then now I heard tonight that it's going back to finance, so has Public Works heard it? We know?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. It was referred back to the Public Works Director for his input on that parcel, and we obtained that now, and that's why it's back on the finance agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Plowman.
If I may, I was simply under the understanding or the thought that we could use that time to gain staff's opinion, which it sounds like we got in the meantime. So we would probably be given the same information this next week. So this may be the same action, just one less item to discuss on Thursday, which is why I'm comfortable with it.
Councilmember Nelson.
So just for clarification, if we vote on this, it's only the one parcel? So we'll still be talking about the other two parcels at the Finance Committee?
That's the motion on the table.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, when I looked at the three parcels, I couldn't see any value of the city of the other two, but the one I certainly did, but I didn't make any contact in regards to it because it's in the committee process, so. Additional discussion to the question. Again, the question is, I'm sorry, the motion is that the city purchase the piece of property that would be beneficial for stormwater, parcel number 95-913-1115. Motion was made and seconded, additional discussion. Councilmember Osmus.
And for what dollar amount?
The listed amount, which I believe was $300.
Okay.
Additional discussion.
That's not how it's listed on here in the minutes. That item is listed as $200, so. If it's listed respectfully, respectively, so.
It's a deal.
It is $200.
I just think we should ask staff to cross the t's and dot the i's before we do it.
Councilmember Fagerly.
I disagree. It's $200. The city stuck $11,000 into the storm sewer there, and the developer also stuck $11,000. Now, the property is right on the edge of my property, I've given an easement.
It's not a problem.
So. The engineer has looked at it.
It isn't about...
Councilmember Nelson.
Excuse me, it isn't about purchasing it or not, it's about whether we have the documentation ready to do it or not. I'm going to vote for this because it needs to be done. I just, we set it up to do at our next meeting, and we asked staff to correct the documentation and to bring it to us correct. That's all I'm saying, so.
What was the corrected documentation?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Let's just vote.
Councilmember Fagerly.
What was the, what's the corrected documentation? We had this in front of the finance, we could have done it, and then there were some concerns brought up.
I'm...
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm agreeing with you on the concerns. I just would have appreciated letting it take its place and voting on it and having the documentation ready to go, that's all. Because none of us knew that you had had a conversation regarding this. I agreed with you that night, I agree with you now. It's more about the protocol of how we're getting it done.
Okay, let's speak to the question. The question is, should the city purchase the piece of property as addressed by parcel number? Additional conversations. I'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Meske.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. There's a motion on the table to file the minutes, additional discussion. All in favor of the motion to file the minutes, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have Community Development Report for October 14th, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Present was myself, councilperson Davis, Meske, and Schwantes. We met at 5:15, public comments, there was no one there to speak to us. Item three, overlay district discussion, this is for information only. Staff explained how overlay districts are a way to have multiple zoning incentive and historic overlaying policies for particular areas. For instance, that the opportunity zone could have a heritage renaissance zone and incentive overlays. These overlays can be permanent or have a renewal date, or they can either be renewed, revised, or allowed to expire. Example presented by staff was a heritage overlay where certain structures and uses might be designated for preservation of use or building restoration, renovation, or potential relocation. When evaluating the downtown, most of the area is suitable for redevelopment, while only a small number of buildings and uses were preliminarily deemed to have some heritage significance. Staff mentioned that the entire opportunity zone has been surveyed and preliminary site-available map has been developed, which will be presented to the committee at a later date, once it has been invented. Staff also presented some preliminary ideas how to have an incentive overlay of the opportunity zone and create additional incentives for particular project types. For instance, the city of Moorhead, Minnesota, has a renaissance zone where new and renovation construction projects are eligible for short, medium, and longer-term tax abatements, depending on their scope. This concept could be an overlay to Wilmer's opportunity zone. Other incentive overlays of the opportunity zone could include free and expedited building permits, free SAC and WAC, and/or sales tax exemptions of some form, the goal being to make the opportunity zone irresistible to development. A motion was made and seconded to direct Planning and Development Services Department to continue its pursuits to further develop incentive and heritage overlays for the opportunity zone. And I'll introduce that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve staff continuing to work on incentives and heritage overlays for the opportunity zones within the city of Wilmer, discussion. Councilmember Fagerly.
It's unfortunate that no one from the Community Development Department is here tonight, but they have the answers.
Additional discussion. You have a motion on the table? Uh, discussion. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. Councilmember Fagerly.
Item four, the outline for comprehensive plan update. Staff highlighted their efforts to launch the development of an updated comprehensive plan for the city of Wilmer. To create a scope of work package for a proposal of services from mid-Minnesota, an outline in the form of a table of contents has been developed. Euler Plate Comprehensive Plan was created, and a list of data mining needs for various maps, tables, and figures was made. Staff informed the committee that the three items were submitted to mid-Minnesota so they can provide a cost of services proposal for later consideration by the committee. Staff also mentioned that once the proposal accepted and the project to update Wilmer's comprehensive plan is funded, that the intent is to request the, the creation of comprehensive plan task force to guide the process and lead the venting of the plan through the Planning, um, Commission, other committees, and community workshops. It is believed that it may take up to 18 to 24 months to complete the new comprehensive plan. And this was for information only. Item five, sex offender ordinance. I was asked, uh, to attend a neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago, and Councilman Alvarado and Maskey were also there. And this is regarding the sex, or the city ordinance 1384 related to where sex offenders may live within the city of Wilmer. Specifically, that section 1078E5 allows an exception to where a sex offender may live by allowing them to live in the primary residence residency of the person's parents, grandparents, siblings, spouse, or children. The complaint was regarding a known sex offender that is living in an unallowed location where the homeowner has a felony criminal record and that there has been a recent arrest. Conditions that may negate the positive intent of the exception to the city's sex offender residency location rule. Now, this isn't quite right. The sex offender is living in a duplex in southwest Wilmer that is owned by a grandma or grandmother, and in the lower level, an uncle who has a felony and a nephew are living together, and the nephew is a sex offender, and the neighbors are concerned. So, a motion was made and seconded to forward to public safety the need to review and potentially amend section 1078E5 to prohibit the exception if the family member owning the primary residency has a felony conviction. And that part isn't right either. So, there has to be a discussion. I think the concern is the person, the sex offender, is not living with the relative that owns the house. They live in the same house, but it's a duplex. One's on the upper level, one's on the lower level. So, I'll make that motion.
I think it was information only.
Right.
Pardon?
I think it's information only to go to that other committee.
Oh, it's motion, or information only, and send it to Councilperson Plowman's committee.
I, I have a question. Um, and I'm going to kind of rely a little bit on the city attorney here because I'm going from memory, and hopefully yours is equal to mine. Um, when we established our sex offender ordinance, the state of Minnesota did not have a sex offender ordinance or ruling. So, we were ahead of the game. And so, our sex offender requirements are higher than what the state sex offender rules are. And we were allowed to do that because we adopted them prior to the sex offender direction being given by Department of Corrections. At the time, there were only a couple cities that had done this, and Councilmember Johnson and I worked extensively on this when a similar concern had been brought to us, and we brought together a lot of players. We brought in corrections out of St. Cloud. We brought in the Wilmer Police Department, Kansas County Corrections, the probation officers. Um, I mean, we had numerous meetings, and Councilmember Johnson worked diligently on this ordinance, um, to bring it the way it is. Um, and I believe it was drafted by our attorney, Scott, and then from there, it was brought to the council, but as my rec, as my memory has it, that we were kind of glad we'd gotten in, in front of the state requirements. Um, and so, I believe the state requirements are at 500 feet instead of 1,000 feet. Um, and originally, we, I think, had asked for 1,500 feet, and we were told we couldn't and had to go to 1,000. Any of this ringing a bell? Um, and so, I'm concerned that if we open this up, we might actually weaken our position, and we'll have to then follow the state if we go to amend our ordinance. So, Attorney Scott, do you have any opinion on that?
Yeah, Mayor Calvin, members of the council, certainly, there's been some developments in the law since the city adopted its ordinance that are, I think, of concern, not just with respect to the issue that was brought, uh, to the Community Development Committee's attention and is referred to Public Works, Public Safety, but in regards to the ordinance as a whole, I would anticipate providing some analysis to the Public Works, Public Safety Committee. I believe it's coming on their agenda for November 6th, so I have that on my list. But beyond those general statements, I'm not prepared to delve into the, the issues that we'll be addressing at this time.
And I know when we put this all together, it was like a three or four-month process. I mean, we went back and forth, and, um, and so, I'm just concerned that, I mean, now it's out in the public. I mean, it's not, I mean, we're going to have to follow it now, but, um, I'm just, I'm really concerned that we're going to really end up watering down our ordinance. Um, I mean, our ordinance can stand as long as it's there, but once you bring it back to light, now it then becomes something that we're probably going to have to address. So, Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, being that this will be coming to public safety, um, yeah, now, I, my primary concern is number one, that it would go through our legal representation and our police chief first, um, as kind of our number one firewall. But then, number two, the way that I hear it, it sounds as though there may be an exemption allowed, but the exemption in the stat, I, there may be a law being broken, or the ordinance may be, being broken as it stands?
No, as long as, my understanding, and again, we'll have to have an interpretation from the attorney, but, um, when we put, when we put it in place, and I mean, you, Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Fagerly were on the council at that time. I don't think, Council, you were there as well.
I added the extra ordinance that can't live by...
That's right. Yeah, you added the other piece. Right. I forgot about that. And so, I mean, so, I mean, so we worked on it and kind of got it through, but my understanding is, is that if we had ours approved, it was okay to continue. The problem came is that if it got readdressed, then we would have to go to the state, and I really don't want to go down to 500 feet. I mean, that's a bad deal, folks. That's a really bad deal, in my opinion. And I mean, and that's why when this concern was originally brought to me, I brought in the council members that were in the ward that it affected, which was Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Christensen, and we brought, you know, we had all the players at the table, and we had the conversation. And we were very diligent in how we did it because all of this, that's the time when the state was releasing all the sex offenders back into communities, and so, yeah.
If I may.
Go ahead.
My only concern to that, and I appreciate that because it makes perfect sense, is just that, um, whether or not the law as it stands, or the, the ordinance as it stands, is being followed or is being broken, because if it is, it seems like that would go through a different chain as opposed to coming back to us. And so, I would request that, that public safety or law enforcement look into that first, if that is the case.
Yeah, and I would really encourage, uh, someone to have conversation with the people out of St. Cloud because they had a lot of really good information that they brought to that table. So, the guys out of St. Cloud are the ones that kind of have the, at, at that time, and I don't know if that's still the case or not, Chief, I don't know if you know if that's still the case or not, but they're the ones that really had the authority, um, to really do things. But, I mean, if we drop down to 500 feet, oh my gosh, folks, that's a bad, bad deal. It's a really bad deal. Councilmember Fagerly.
Going to Public Works.
It's coming your way.
Thank you.
Item six, lawn mowing and snow removal compliance checks. I asked to revisit the city council's discovery of a lack of compliance verification after cited properties have been completed, cited lawn mowing and snow removal. Public work regularly cites lawn and snow maintenance issues. The building inspectors only cite these conditions when citing, uh, building maintenance infractions. And this is for information only, and we'd like to send that to Public Works, too.
Sounds like we have, sounds like we're returning back into the vicious cycle we were in four years ago. We'll have one committee look at it, and then we'll send it to another committee, and send it to another committee, and then it might get back to the council.
Well, we were prepared to pass them both, so.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
Just... Just move on.
Move on. Item seven, opportunity zone incentives to encourage mixed-income housing. This is for information only. Staff mentioned they would like to develop a policy, proposals for incentives for mixed-income housing in the opportunity zone. The committee did not object to the, using the opportunity zone as a pilot for such policies and directed the department to present its proposals when formalized. And that was information only again. And then, item eight, updates. Staff highlighted some of the department's current activities for the committee, which included Wilmer's official enrollment in the National Flood Insurance Program as of September 27th, and that NFIP-backed flood insurance is now available to anyone desiring to purchase it. In addition, staff announced that the new permit technician's first day will be today, and I'm assuming she started, Mr. Administrator? I was taking notes. What was the question? Our tech person for Community Development, she started today? Correct. Yep. All right. Thank you. Uh, staff reported that the department has had 493 permits thus far for projects totaling a value of $50 million and permit revenues of over $400,000. And staff mentioned their plans to develop an Excel spreadsheet to maintain development record, each sector, retail, institu, institutional, industrial, and multifamily housing on both a biweekly and annual basis. And with that, if there's no further questions, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes. Discussion.
I have one.
Councilmember, uh, Maskey.
Um, I would assume that the item five, I think the chair had pointed out that some things were perhaps not correct in there. Will that item be corrected for approving these things?
And I guess that, uh, maybe the chair can work with the administrator to get those minutes corrected.
Can do that.
Um, and then I had a question in regards to the item number four, um, and it talks about the creation of a comprehensive plan task force. Is that going to be created under the Community Development? Or is it going to be, I know when that, when it was done last time, it was created under the mayor's office. Um, and so, I don't know if you're going to do that outside of the mayor's office or what, if that had been talked about?
It was not talked about, but once we see it, and when Mr., or Dr. Ramstead wants to move on it, we'll let you know, and you can appoint members.
The only thing is, is then if we're going to do that, then, you know, it's nice to have names coming forward on who you would suggest for those spots. Um, I mean, it is allowed, you know, it could be done under, under either the, the, your committee, or it could be done under the, um, Planning Development Commission as well. It could, it could be done to any of the three spots.
Yep.
The way, the way I read it. Correct?
He's looking for a bid from mid-Minnesota, and he thought it'd be $20,000 to $25,000 for them, and once we know, then.
Okay. Motion has been made and filed to file the minutes. Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion does carry. The Labor Relations Committee report for October 14th. Councilmember Maskey.
Yep, we met on the 14th, and I want to thank, it was our normal membership, but I'll thank Rick Fagerly for sitting in for Councilmember Alvarado. Um, we have actually no action items for you this evening, but three informational items. Uh, the first one that was brought forward was a vacation leave policy change request that would have had employees who've accumulated 240 hours of vacation can cash up to 80 hours of that vacation one time per calendar year when they've used at least 40 hours of vacation time in the past 12 months. Uh, we had a spirited discussion about it, and the committee decided that it was best to not forward it at this time. Citing various reasons of, of trying to utilize vacation and to, as far as even talking about adding a benefit when we're not in a negotiating year, but it was decided by the committee not to forward that to the council at this time. The next item was section nine, as you have become accustomed to us bringing personnel policy changes. This particular one, we did not bring this evening because it did have, um, some sexual harassment and respectful workplace policies. We were very supportive of those two policies coming forward, but there was an inclusion of council members involved in those, the council, um, councilmembers and the mayor subjected to that same respectful workplace policy, and so, we wanted to make sure, we weren't opposed to that either, but we wanted to make sure there was congruency with the charter. So, we had reevaluation of the charter because it does cite, uh, if you do things of, um, I'm going to forget the phrase now, I just had to share it.
Moral turpitude.
Moral turpitude is cited in the charter, that if a violation of a respectful workplace policy could equate to moral turpitude, uh, then they would be, the penalties of the charter would come into play. So, we were going to add a sentence that said, uh, elected officials, if they are convicted of an act of moral turpitude, may forfeit their office in addition. So, you will see section nine come at our next meeting. Um, and we did introduce, uh, section 10 as well, uh, that is attached. Again, a lot of those are kind of right from state statute pieces that are in there about reprimand and so on. But again, those are, just for information at this time, we'll be having more discussion on that one at our next meeting. Uh, there were no action items, and that, that was what concluded our minutes, uh, and so, I would respectfully, uh, move to approve and file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to file the minutes as presented. Discussion. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have consideration of settlement and release agreement between the city of Wilmer and Judy Thompson. Our city administrator, Brian Grammets.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, uh, we've been working on, uh, the settlement and release agreement, uh, with Judy Thompson. As you're well aware of, there was some discussion about being exempt or non-exempt, and we've cleared all of those issues up, and this is the last step in finalizing, uh, the, uh, steps as we go forward. This concludes all of the actions and, uh, for the city or, or the employee to now move forward as the council directed, as the job description so described, as in the classification so described, and this will resolve any questions about fairness or unfairness on the city or the employee. This settles it. We're all done, and we can move forward.
I entertain a motion to accept the separation agreement and release agreement from the city of Wilmer and Judy Thompson. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Mesky?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. City Administrator Grammets, are we aware of any other grievances or anything coming? Or as far as we know, is this going to kind of clean up the stuff that we had sitting there?
We're slow but surely cleaning up all the personnel issues that I'm aware of. So we're getting down, down to the, to the bottom. We still, you know, have discussions on other issues, like with labor unions, but we're one by one clicking them off and settling, you know, and moving on, yep.
Good. I'd like to thank you for your leadership, and also Ms. Beckman for her leadership in making this happen. I do appreciate that. Next, our city council member announcements, I'll start with councilmember Mesky.
Pass.
Councilmember Schwantes.
As you know, the city hall task force had done a tour of various city hall sites, and we would like to do a second trip, and that is going to be on Wednesday, November 6th. So city hall task force members are welcome to join us, along with any other task, city council members, and we'll be getting more information out in regard to that.
Councilmember Davis?
Pass.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we know winter is just around the corner, and the Celebrate the Lights of the World Christmas Light Display is starting to be worked on. They're going to be looking for volunteers, so seek them out. They're, they're busy, too. So I would ask the public to seek out John Schmidt and offer to help him out, because it's a big project. They've got some exciting new lights out there, it's going to be fun to see it, so get excited about that, and, and please volunteer. I've been out there already this past weekend. Had an opportunity to sit with the AIM people in their town hall, it's a every-two-year town hall that they have. Some of the members of AIM presented some concerns, and I want to talk to different departments and, and share those with them going forward. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Schwantes.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only that, the Public Works Public Safety will be meeting this Wednesday, the 23rd, 5:15 PM at City Hall. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just that finances meeting this Thursday, it'll be a regular meeting on October 24th. And then just a reminder that we are inviting the full council to both the November 7th and the November 21st, finance meetings to continue budget conversations. And if there are any other requests for agenda items regarding the mayor's budget, to please send them to city administrator Grammets.
Councilmember Fagerly.
No meeting for community development.
Okay, well, we're taking care of item number 15 at the same time, so the only thing is labor, is there a labor meeting?
Yep, as planned, October 28th, 6:15.
Okay, so that takes care of agenda item number 15 along with number 14. At this point, we'll go into closed session for labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota State Statute 13D .03 Sub 1B. So the agenda, the opening statement is, the agenda item for this meeting is strategy for labor negotiations pursuant to Minnesota State Statute Section 13D .03 Subdivision 1. Roll call. I will now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. The city council will now go into closed session. The time is 7:54. And only officials and consultants of the city who reasonably require access to this data may be in attendance at any portion of the meeting for this agenda item. Closed portion of the meeting will be electronically recorded pursuant to Minnesota State Statute Section 13D .03 Subdivision 2. If you are not part of this meeting, please vacate the room.